I'm glad. And basically, it was from Claremont Savings Bank. Corey will jump in if I screw any of this up because I'm doing it from memory. And it's to support our backpack program in all the Charlestown schools. And it basically provides food for the kids over the weekends. And normally, a lot of the money that they get comes from donations or donations of food. But at least half of it is coming from this because it's normally about a $10,000 a year program. So at this point, that's we basically just put that out into the universe. If anyone has questions about it, we answer them. And then when we get to the actual meeting, it's an agenda item and the board can formally agree to accept or decline. So. Questions? Did I get all of it, do you think?
I think you do. We serve about forty five students.
And this is just Charlestown.
I believe that.
It's just the Charlestown area that that this program. I don't know if the other kind of areas have similar programs.
Is that because the the Claremont has a branch office in Charlestown?
I think just because the one of the teachers involved in the program applied for the grant.
Yeah, yeah, Charlestown applies. Anything else? Because if there isn't, then you close the hearing and then you wait till next and then you start again.
You have any questions about that?
Yes, you may make a comment.
I don't know which teacher it was, but I mean, just the same things. A terrific program. I think it was technically Genesis Porter who wrote the grant, but we have several teachers involved in the program. They typically pack backpacks on Thursday after noon at the old town hall. And I believe the program's been running for several years.
Yeah.
The nurse that we had previously working with Crystal and now you know, Pam Patnold and Zara's involved and he would give and then it's a porter. Mr. Stevens often is there packing the backpacks. And so it's quite a group of folks who support, do the work to support the program.
And I actually know it's not a very, it's not a small application to apply to the saving foundation. So I know it took a lot of work and they get a lot of applicants. So to get that grant is special.
All right. Anything else? Any other comments or? All right, I will close public hearing. Right? All right. All right, we have approval of some minutes. Approval of Monday, October tenth, public session. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Yes.
Second? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, I move it to a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Passes. Do we hear a motion for Monday, October twenty fourth workshop?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Moving it to a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Abstain.
Abstaining.
I wasn't here.
All right, we have Thursday, October twenty seven, public sessions.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any, any opposed? One abstain? All right, Thursday, October twenty seventh, non-public session.
Yes.
Second?
I will second.
Any discussion? I'm hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Recognition of visitors and public comments.
A lot of the kids are here and a lot of the people are here for two agenda items. I just don't know if anyone else.
Okay, I'm just checking. Open it up. Any discussion? All right. Superintendent's report.
So I sent you the superintendent's report. I'll just highlight a couple of the things. You know, we've been, I think the first thing to let everyone know is the budget, you know, we've been working through it both as a team, with the board and with the budget committee. We've been reading with groups of budget committee people from time to time, which almost always includes Jennifer. So we've been doing that and we'll continue doing that and trying to gather information that various people would like. I believe that's going well. It seems to be. Talked a little bit about our next coming to the mountain event, which is really, I think, going to be more of a community wide thing. Try to bring some of the community organizations back into the school. So that not only the students and the kids know what's available, but also the adults in the communities. And then having different activities, we're talking about sometime in February or that. The other thing is about state accountability. They released their designations after a little bit of a hiatus because of COVID. The worst designation, I guess there's no nice way to put it, that you can get is called CSI, which is comprehensive screen improvement, need of improvement. That's when overall you fall in the bottom five percent of all schools in the state. Then they have targeted school improvement, which is if you fall in the bottom five percent in specific areas, whether it's socio economic or student disabilities or ELL, that type of thing. And then you have ATS I, which is additional targeted school improvement, which is sort of like the lowest challenging tier. It's basically they just add a few more stools in because they didn't have enough schools to hit the five percent. And you're in because of that. So you're not in the bottom five for any of the targeted areas. They just added you to make the number that they were trying to get to the five percent.
Well, that's kind of a.
It's if you knew kind of the background, it's very, yeah, well, it's very challenging because you're you're supposed to have five percent and we don't have enough schools that always fit into that category. And so there's this whole decision matrix that they go through, which sometime when you have an hour or two, I'll give you a brief snapshot of. But the long story of the short story is that we had one school added to the additional targeted support school, and that's the high school. Which is interesting because the high school actually has the smallest number of indicators to work with. My guess, if I were guessing and knowing with Vander and some of the work we're doing in special ed, it's probably because of the graduation rate of our special education. Because that's the targeted area, special education.
Oh.
Remaining on the ATS I list is Vylus. And that is for the exact same reason, not graduation, but special education. And then actually removed from the list because of improvements in that area was Charlestown primary. So overall, that's where that is. I did include the current list of job openings. I think if you look at it, you'll see even though the list is long, much less or fewer of them are actual classroom in the school teachers. Still quite a few pairs in certain locations and then the rest, a lot of coaches and other activities things. And that is in general, the superintendent's report, but I'm happy to answer. Excuse me, any questions?
All right. And our building administrators, who do you have a?
I can pick people. I will sort of just give a brief overview. I know most of you saw them in the packet. What we decided to do based on that meeting we had at the beginning of summertime sometime was focus on one of the indicators in our strategic plan and just sort of give the board kind of an update on that area. So it's not as all encompassing. But the area we decided to look at this time was culture and climate and our attempts and work at making sure that we do everything we can with students' help and staff help to have a good culture and climate. So we will start with, I will just pick. All right, Corey, you can go first. I was gonna pick Gail, but that's okay.
At Charlestown Middle School and North Charlestown Community School, we certainly have some work to do in the areas of culture and climate. I think last year was a challenging year for a variety of reasons with both of those buildings. And so we're starting fresh. There's some struggles though that we face. Part of it has to do with staffing. We are technically four vacant positions at North Charlestown Community Schools. So we have one of our Charlestown Middle School staff members reassigned to Charlestown, to North Charlestown for right now. So we are running down a position at the middle school and with still three vacancies at north. I had an interview today with somebody who didn't show up. So even when we're getting candidates, it's still hard to get them all the way through the process. But hopefully that will change soon. But when we, when the full staff or have vacancies, it does tend to put a strain on everyone else as they're picking up pieces and doing double duty and things of that nature. Because we don't have erroneous staff in our budget. We have budgeted what we need. And when we don't have those positions filled, we don't have what we and that'd be really difficult. We've had a number of students in the last two weeks. I think I talked to Chief Connors every day for a week and a half, making a whole host of variety of writing comments from second graders to eighth graders. So we were non discriminatory in the age category of those comments, but we work very closely with the child assembly department to determine the level of risk associated with the comments, the threat and in the subsequent response. We do have some folks who are willing to come together and talk about our protocol, procedure, responsive threats and how we're going to handle that moving forward, particularly as it really is a communication of both staff and families. So that you don't get the social media storm of inaccurate information, rumors and assumptions that really just tend to be a challenge for all instead of helping move things forward. So we will be working on that. We also use a behavior management system at the middle school that's based on merits, loss and gain. And it's been something in place for quite a long time, but I think most folks agree that it's due to be evaluated and to assess its current effectiveness, its purpose, its role and how we can improve upon what we're doing there to better support the needs of our students and staff. And I think needs of students and also probably staff have changed dramatically since the system was first developed and created and implemented many years ago. So that's another piece. And then you know, all of these things feed into the climate and culture pieces and the staff burnout pieces. We are looking at different anti bullying programs. One that is on the radar right now is out of the mistake just to help hold our students and our families understand what bullying actually is, is a term that's used widely, but not accurately. And also what students and staff can do and families can do to help prevent those negative behaviors and increase our positive behaviors of, you know, kindness and caring toward others. So as far as that particular focus area of the plan is concerned, that's where we currently stand. Additionally, we have a hundred and seventy pot, seventy five pies on the radar to make next week for a PK fundraiser. So they expected, I think, maybe thirty. And had a significantly larger response than that. So they're excited and overwhelmed at the same time. But they will be filling all of those waters next week. Our tri annual or trimester trip for those students who have earned it and who are eligible is scheduled for Tuesday. They're heading to Keen to Go Bowling in Papita. So that's something that has done organized by Nancy Kyle and our library media area. And it's for all of our students who have not lost their merits and are eligible to participate. And then in the winter is ice skating and the end of the year, I think, is at the beach that they do. So these are funded through fundraising. The cash calendar for the month of November is happening now and they draw they draw every day, Monday to Friday. The winners of that and lots of folks have been very pleased to be the winner so far. So that's exciting. And lastly, shortly after the Thanksgiving break, we kick off the winter sports season with basketball tryouts primarily. And so we're looking forward to that and getting those teams rolling. Where we are at the middle school in North Raffa.
Sounds good.
You want to go now, Gail?
I've drawn, I know most of you got my report, but I thought of some things that I forgot. I'll just highlight a few that were on the list for cultivating a positive culture. For Alston Primary, our lead, our new lead teacher is providing weekly updates, you know, every Sunday she can nail staff, say what's going on, what's happening. You know, anything that needs to be shared about the school regarding coverage. Staff are all helping out where they're needed. They're celebrating each other. Someone just turned sixty recently and people brought in cupcakes. You know, birthday milestones and babies. Kevin Hicks is in the principal program at UVEI and his coach Elijah Hawks, who's the director of school leadership, visited our school. And he made some comments about the positive climate he saw at Vylus. He saw our relaxed staff, student centered classrooms, staff that appeared motivated and collegial. And he said he's analyzed schools for years and not all schools show a good climate. Our teachers are strong at Vylus. We've been meeting and collaborating about enrichment, which is a thirty minute period where we are skill building for students. We alternate days in math, reading, reading using the eye ready lessons and writing. Each teacher is taking turns to come up with informational articles for students to read and assist with writing prompts. We've put along our strong focus on improving students' understanding of informational text where they seem to fall down in on the state testing. One thing I did forget to note is I recently nominated Rich Mead for the VFW award. It's a local award and then I submitted it to the the Charlestown VFW. It's nominated a teacher that is really stimulates a love of American history, patriotism, citizenship, you know, innovation and resources. And Rich, as you remember, is the one who just came and took kids on HT, which by the way, he does want to bring kids to present. So I think he's well deserving and I, he actually said to me, I think he cared more about this award than I do. And I said, well, that's probably all the more reason why you deserve it because he just does what he does for the kids. Students reporting increased in culture. I'd already mentioned the we did some team building events and activities around Halloween. We have a bowling trip planned. Enrichment, I mentioned. We have a club once a week at Vylus and students choose and teachers and support staff lead either like soccer, math games, gardening, board games, basketball. APS just participated in the holidays fundraiser and one little boy said came running into the Vylus secretary and you know, got her to order things. He goes, if my class wins, we'll have a dip party. She had no idea what he was talking about. And finally figured it out. It's like whoever sold the most gets some dip and they can have some dip. But unfortunately, his class didn't win. David Saul coordinated it. They sold $4,000 and they bring in half of that. So that's pretty good for a small school. Also, Vylus will be having, bringing back their big craft fair that they were known for before COVID. So we hope a lot of people come out for that. I think, you know, burnout, I think laughter and communication and teamwork count. I have quite a few teachers that work outside of school as well as work in school. They're on district committees. They have family responsibilities and they all come ready to assist children, support them. And we have kids that come to the office and there's always someone that can talk with them and meet with them, whether it's my behavior assistant, teacher, a counselor. So that's it.
For positive culture for the staff, just for the attendance area, you know, we continue to work on our multi-tiered system of supports and having engaging discussions on interventions and how we can support the students across all grade levels. We're looking at possibly changing the way that we set up some of our block scheduling at the big school for intervention times as well. And then all of our staff just continued to be involved in the planning of events and activities that bring joy and excitement to all of our students. And for the positive culture for our students at the primary school, we had our Halloween parade. We went up to the common and local businesses came out and met them and we actually had our, our E teacher taught the pre K kindergarten, first grade and fifth graders, the monster mash dance, and they performed it out on the common for everyone. That was a great sight. They had fifth grade buddies. They came down and decorated and carved pumpkins with their kindergarten buddies. And they love doing this every year. They're the role models and really step up and help out with all those activities. At the North Walpole School, they had their Halloween parade and we went down by the North Walpole Park and families and organizations were all down there and it was great to see that that again. They're also doing chickens with capes, which is a community service where we ask students, you know, if they want to participate in this and during once a week on Wednesdays during lunch and recess, they do come up with some ideas of how they want to support local communities and everything. And we had over fifty students volunteer to take part in this. So some of the things that they've been doing, they, the second grade is bringing in non perishable food items, third grade's bringing in hygiene products. And fourth grade is bringing in socks. And then this Friday, they're going to be going to our place in Bellows Falls, you know, taking a bus over and bringing all the items over to donate to them. And then last week they made cards and pies, over fifty pies, I think it was for the veterans in the area. They brought those over as well. They were very excited for that. At the elementary school, they had our zombie run, which the kids love doing where they, they run around and the staff are hiding amongst, in the on the trail to try to get their flags and everything like that. It's a lot of fun and usually the staff end up more exhausted and hurt than the kids, but but it's a fun activity every single year. We had student council elections where kids were up on stage. You know, and it was just great getting all this stuff back. And we have advisory, we had a baking competition this year. We had over twenty two kids create things and I've never felt so sick after eating all of that afterwards. But the creations, the creations that they came up with was outstanding. It was a lot of fun. And then we had spirit week as well. And then something that we're really excited to be bringing back is our gratitude feast. At the Walpole Elementary School, we're going to be inviting local organizations, businesses and people that have really donated a lot of time and and energy into the schools over the past few years. And we're going to be having a big feast in the gymnasium and inviting others in. And at the primary school in North Walpole School, we're doing the same thing, but they're allowed to invite one special adult guest. And we'll be doing that on the twenty second. So we're very excited for that. And then some of the things that focus on students. SEL has really been focused on finding and talking with students about finding a trusted adult that they feel comfortable going to and sharing things with and whenever they need assistance. And our counselors do an amazing job of this and always find time for every single one of our students. And we even have parents reaching out and asking for resources, how they could best support their students at home and everything. And our counselors just do an amazing job of supplying that for them. And then our staff continue to be there as trusted adults as well for students and families. And we just continue to build relationships, strong relationships throughout the year. That's our number one goal. And one thing that we're currently looking into a few years or a while ago, our district brought in a speaker who spoke about his son. It's called Ryan's story. And we're looking to bring that back for our middle school. And I'm actually talking with all the other two middle school principals about bringing everyone together to have that discussion again about having, you know, online and social media, bullying and everything and how we really address that. And we're going to ask for him to do a parents night as well. So parents can be aware of how social media is really affecting this as well. So we're, we're working on that piece.
I will very quickly be pressed. Chris is not here today, but he had to go to class. His first class that he's taking is part of this, I think he's going to go to superintendent certification a few years down the road, but he had reported a bunch of things too, which I had in your in your folder, but I will mention that the kids seem to really enjoy the buddy classes, which is where the older kids are working with younger kids. I think probably that was stalled a little bit to the age of COVID. And then the other thing that see, he gets stuck with whatever I think is very super exciting. And it's that the staff and the teachers are so excited to be there and be out in the halls and seeing the kids. And equally as important to me is that their level of burnout and stress seems to be reduced and their work life balance seems to be getting a little better. So that's a good thing. We will move on to Mr. Ronning in the Fall Mountain Regional High School. Are you going to have the kids do it for you? I had them after, but they can do it.
They always go before I do.
The kid, sorry.
All right. So first off, last Thursday, the Fall Mountain held a Veterans Day tribute where nineteen students came up and gave presentations or spread off speeches and essays that they wrote towards Veterans Day and veterans that we had come out. It went very well as most, as all the students that did it enjoyed it a lot. And all the and all the teachers that helped out felt very good about how we did. And we're hoping to do it again next year if possible. Another thing is the freshman and senior classes collaborate on a craft fair on November fifth. I wasn't there, but I do believe it went well. I think it was seventy seven percent of the students responded to a survey asking if they have trusted staff members at the high school that they believe in and can trust with whatever they need to go to. That's good. Student Congress just did a food drive in our school. And we got five hundred and forty nine cans for the Fall Mountain Food Shelf in total. Though we had every first block class brought in whatever cans they could with the top three classes getting rewarded. The first place got donuts and cider, I believe. Second place got caramel apples and third place got, I think, a dollar to the school store. And that seemed to work out very well. Several students will be involved in the NEAS, I think is what you say, collaborative visit over the next two days. There will be people coming around, if you come around with this program, coming in and trying to take at least ten minutes in every class. Make sure everything, get the information. You know, having the French word.
Just wanted to mention that the JRTC program was also involved in the Veterans Day event on Thursday. And then they also did the parade in Manchester on Friday and went to a drill competition on Saturday. So they were busy weekends this weekend. And then French National Honor Society recently traveled to Vylus Middle School to do our annual French invasions, is what we call them. So we go into one of the cultural studies classes at each of the middle schools. So by the Charleston Walpole, whenever Senator Shobis there. Um so by the struggle in the wall hole, whenever send the show was there. And then we also try and get to Lemster and Unity as well to include them. And we just talked to them about the French program and the high school programs in general. Give them the eighth graders specifically to give them a taste of what it would be like, get from the high school, learn French. Um this year we played a game with them in French to teach them some verbs, some verbs and words that are similar to English words. So they had a lot of fun with that. They were guessing what the words meant. Ms. Rowe played with one of the groups. She played with my group. They they did think she was cheating because she had the most points, but.
Unofficial lighter in French. All the boys that didn't want me in their group. Then like, oh, she's winning.
Then the next day we made crepes with them, so we made, we had a demonstration of crepes. And then we fed each kid at least one crepe and we had a topping bar. There was one kid who wanted every single topping and I'm pretty sure they might have gone home with in a sugar cone.
I mean, it's just gotten through Day of the Dead with lots.
And then we also just volunteered at Poutine Fest, which is an event um up in Merrimack. They, we had seven people go and we volunteered with the Franco-American Center. So they have like food trucks and restaurants come out and set up poutine stations and we helped. Ver- verify that everyone going through had a stamp for each station. Um so that was pretty fun. And then tomorrow, or not tomorrow, Wednesday, we'll be going to UNH for their World Language Day. So we're gonna drive the school bus there with all the French Honor Society kids. And we'll be spending the day at UNH and learning about language programs there, opportunities like that. And Spanish Club just celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month, um so they had a bunch of cultural activities related to Hispanic heritage. And they put up a mural in the hallway related to Hispanic American culture and stuff that they've done. With that. Yeah, I'm almost done.
Alright, uh so uh our quizzable team here at the high school uh. Be uh competing in two qualifying meets for the Granite State Challenge on Saturday. Uh this last Wednesday, I believe, we had a good amount of students coming into our cafeteria. To take the test in hopes that they would be able to make it on this team. Sadly, they were all unable, not all of them were able to make it, but we had. Um Jen and in uh sports-related news, um Jennifer Dillian uh represent Fall Mountain in the New England uh cross-country event. Uh Mitch Cormier represents Fall Mountain, the New England Golf Event in Connecticut. And at N- New Hampshire Tackles Hunger Event, we collected and donated over a thousand pounds of food to the Fall Mountain Food Shelf. Uh and fall sports banquets are taking place in the incoming weeks and. And winter sports are starting to begin uh actually. For us.
Thank you. So with regard to um school culture, some of the things that we're doing is every Monday, we look forward to Monday, which is just an event for staff. With regard to wear two different colored socks, do something fun, wear red or whatever it is, um just try to have fun. Um we also plan monthly fun events with regard to different things to do. Um every staff. At a staff meeting, actually gets a index card and on the index card, they end up on the one side, they end up writing something positive that's going on in their. Life here at school and on the other side, something that they may need. Um so we get positives and things that they need. We need a new coffee maker or things like that. But um with regard to positives, I don't feel like um support staff are segregated anymore. Which is a positive there. I always have someone to go to for help. Um a student asked for proofing on an essay. Um it was, the essay was amazing, so I forwarded it to their middle school teacher who was mentioned, trying to make sure we make the connections of the middle school. Um and then great support from the veteran staff to new staff. Um and with regard to another piece for the community connections, that's one of the things I had mentioned when I interviewed. Uh we just started looking for alumni. Uh we have an alumni up to another line group. Uh but today an email went out to all staff, soliciting people who they know as alumni, start small. Um and we're gonna start taking pictures or get the pictures of alumni and start hanging them in the halls. With regard to the picture and eight by ten with their name, the year they graduated and what profession or what they're doing. To be successful. It meets our school vision, it meets our mission, the mission and all that kind of stuff. So with regard to students walking through the halls, seeing that being here in high school matters. Because this is the connection for after the school, when they're, when they graduate. So that's what I have.
Brad, you have anything to add? I didn't think so, but I didn't want you to be a lockout.
Kristin.
Sure, um so I um. Took strategy number one, which was promote collaboration, reflection and responsibility. Tried to focus on that. Um I did share with you uh the two professional learning opportunities um that we've had uh in October. Um one was um an all-day professional development day. Um and uh we invited Nick Fariola um in, um and he talked about um diversity and inclusivity. Um and uh it was a follow-up from the August presentation he had done to staff. Uh so that was really well um received. Um in terms of um our teachers, um our new teachers are continuing to meet with their mentors. Uh they meet with them um uh almost daily, um if not every couple of days, but they need to sit down every, every week for at least thirty minutes. Uh this month I gave them an article to read. Um teachers that are new to the profession uh go through stages of development. Um and disillusionment is the one that tends to happen um in November and December. Um and so we really wanna focus and talk to them about, um at the beginning of the year, things are very stressful. They have a ton on their plate. Um and then suddenly they move into this phase of, I don't know if I can do this. I don't know if I made the right decision. Um and so we help them through that process. Um and so I gave um an article for them to read with their um new teacher. And then to discuss, um and then I will follow up with both of those groups to discuss that even further. Um and I do that periodically over the course of the year. Um uh the Professional Development Committee um um uh is meeting to rewrite their PD master plan, so we've asked. Staff to give some input um into things that they uh want to see changed or things that they want to see addressed. Um and I actually met with a a small group today uh to continue talking about that and looking at ways that we can. Um make sure that we're supporting teachers in their growth and their development, that there's a clear connection to the evaluation system. Um so we've already started to make some of those uh changes and eventually you will see that plan because it needs to come to you before it sends to the state. Um and then the last piece that I talked about was the collaboration around the instructional materials. Um committees that we have going, so um the K four ELA met last week, we had great discussion. Uh Cory joined us as the principal um representative. Uh we have. Uh all three reading specialists sitting on that committee as well as I think thirteen teachers, a rather large committee. Um we met for about an hour. We did look at some data first and then um had some really good conversation. And then I shared a podcast with them. Um uh uh a couple of days later, it's called uh Soul the Story, um and it's all about uh really the reading force, it's a phenomenal podcast. And then the middle school map committee actually met today. I met with them after the PD committee. Um and we started having um conversations as well and that was also a very good conversation.
Zandra.
Sarah, question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, could you share the article with us? Because some of us, even though we've been in the profession forever, still have those feelings.
Yes, absolutely. I would certainly do that. Yeah, I'll send it to Misty.
Sure, uh short and sweet, honestly, especially well entering in schools and their related service providers. So they get the opportunity to participate in all these fun activities and they set their schedule well, they can join these fun days, look at many of what's going on. So I appreciate that, that it does function that way, that we're on a standalone service, which is really nice that we're part of the building. Uh we do continue to meet with our special education leadership team, so that's going well. We've got our second meeting now with the plan, so we've got some focuses we're heading there. Um I have at this point, time of the year, I've had with all my related service providers. I do that every year, meet them individually. So I have a feeling of how everybody's doing. Um and the part of one thing I focus on is. Collaboration, working together, um team building. So like birthdays, we do a birthday card for every individual person, all the team members sign the birthday card. And make sure everybody's birthdays are remembered. Um yeah, so things are going well, but it's just they've been enjoying being part of the schools.
So can we just highlight that Xandra held thirty forty-five minute meetings. With each one of our service workers. So that's not to say that the principals aren't doing that with teachers, but. Especially at stuff, finding time is hard, so great job there.
And I think that's everyone. I didn't show them everyone.
Could I ask one question? What are the two core reading instructional programs that you're looking at do?
I amplify CKLA, it's called Core Knowledge Language Arts, um and then Witten Wisdom with G O's.
Alright, can you send that to Misty so she can send, send me that? Thank you.
Okay, so mine's real quick. Um I should know we're in budget season too and this. I'm kind of filled you in on that. Um you'll have the MS twenty-five and the DOE twenty-five here tonight sign and then we can get the tax rates that. For the different towns. I've got my end ready. Now I just gotta send that in so that I can work with the state to get that set. Um you also have any here today financials um through today. Um in our office, we're gonna start changing the way we pay our bills. We're gonna be doing it bi-weekly instead of doing it weekly, so there'll be less. Reports to go through. Um it just makes sense to do it that way. So payroll will be one week and then in the other weeks it'll be eight. Um and that's how most districts actually do it anyways. Um now cut back a little bit on just all the paperwork that's sent out, so. But other than that, I don't have a lot to report. We've just been busy with budget, you know, negotiations and all those wonderful things. So.
So when you are setting the tax rate, the. That is um that the uh forms that we were working on tonight, that that we were looking through tonight, uh those can. That, can you just explain to the, like the public who's listening, just a little bit about what all that is, just a, I mean, I know it's very complicated, but can you just briefly go over what that is?
Yeah, the MS twenty-five is, DOE twenty-five is the long extended version. The MS twenty-five is consolidated version. It's all our financials for fiscal year twenty-two, put into one form that comes down to how much money you're going to have left over. For the taxpayers, which we have about a million dollars. We had one point five, five hundred thousand went to the funds, the trust funds for the different. Uh towns and nothing went to high school this year. And then a million dollars will be coming back on the tax rate, which is then apportioned through our methods. To determine how much is going to which town when we set the tax rate.
So we have a, we have a million coming back again this year.
Yes, and again, that's mostly due to wages and not being able to hire staff.
Yes, go ahead. So do we have, I'm sorry, forgive me, because I've been out of the loop a little bit. Um do we have copies of the filings, the MS twenty-five and DOE twenty-five, are they?
They're coming around.
Oh, here.
They're coming around to you. Your way, yeah, yes.
I didn't know if they were scanned in.
No, okay, they're, they're being circulated, but I can scan them and send them to you if you'd like.
Thank you.
Hopefully that was enough.
No, yeah, that, that was, I just. No one knows what an MS twenty-five is, so. It's just like an IEP or I, I always like to make sure that people kind of know what it is we're talking about. It's easy to, it's easy to go into jargon and. Um then, you know, we don't necessarily know what that is, so.
Well, and again, the MS twenty-five is, is the DRA's report, Department of Revenue. DOE's report is Department of Education. They're basically the same, they're just runs a little bit smaller.
So we have, have we filed the revenue, updated revenue report?
No, I will be doing that as well.
Accepted.
Yes, yes, I will be doing that tomorrow. I'm making adjustments to the.
Thank you. Alright. So let's see, where are we going next?
Local Elementary School Dress Code Committee update.
A lot of these fine individuals.
Yes, they are.
On up, guys. Always fine, you don't worry. Let's swing around.
So for the past year, we've had a dress code committee that is really determined to um. They wanted to take a look at the Walpole Dress Code and then they wanted to present something for the district. Um they've been discussing a lot of these things with. A lot of the students in the Walpole Attendance area. Uh they were looking at um dress code policies across. Um the state, really, you know, uh local ones around us as well, to kind of get an idea of maybe a direction that we want to go in. So uh we were supposed to present right at the end last year, something came up, so they've been continuing to work and they're excited to present to you tonight. I'm gonna have them introduce themselves and then they will get started.
Um hello, Fall Mountain School Board, this is my, I'm about ninety-three. My name is Sophia DelSandro and I'm ninety-three. My name is Ingrid Aronolson.
My name is Annie Paul and I'm seventy-three. Um today we're here to propose to you um a new dress code for your district. Um our old dress code at Walpole was very unfit for uh current like surgical times. As well as what our student body felt would make a comfortable learning environment. And so over the past year, we. Worked together to um sort of. Uh come up with a new dress code based off other dress codes like Mr. said, so.
They're gonna get, she's sending it to Mr. McKinley right now, so it's one second. Yeah.
Were all of you on the committee last year too?
Yes.
I think our, we've had students in and out, being involved in stuff, but these four students were the ones that were really driving it, so.
Think it must require sneakers though, because you're all up sneakers. There you go, I got you through the awkward pause.
So it was the former dress code for Walpole and its area. And I, we know that it was not like this for all of the schools in the district, but. Uh here are some key points that we knew felt we had a lot of problems with and looked deep into the chain. The administration has the absolute responsibility to determine what clothing is acceptable. Um that is very broad and everyone has our opinion on what clothing they find acceptable. So we just found that to be a little confusing to staff and it would help just um avoid a lot of problems when regarded of. Number, number four, uh education, educational distraction. Rooming and dress must be not. But must not be so unusual or bizarre as to constitute a distraction or interfere. With the educational opportunity of the other students. With ever-changing styles of the seasons, additional guidelines are established to help maintain the standards of dress. So as to prevent distraction to the educational. Um this is, so, um we chose that, we highlighted that one because of number five. Uh so I'll continue on that. Shorts such as walking shorts, braiding shorts and other cutoff shorts of similar length, mid-dye longer are acceptable and appropriate. Short shorts and cut-off fringed edges are not allowed. Can't be branding on the backside, they're not allowed. So four and five infer that uh short shorts or short with cutoffs are deemed as a distraction. Um that, like, uh, role is also mostly geared towards female students. Because it's um not in high school, but rarely see a male student wearing short shorts with cutoffs. And so having a rule of those being distracting is implying that the female body or a student's body is distracted in some way. So for the same reason as the other one, it's inferring that. Uh undergarment straps are distracting and not teeny-spo appropriate with almost everybody with undergarment protection for something that's not high. As well as um the shirts and tops um specifically. Dating the something in back is inferring that those parts of. Dating the something in back is inferring that those parts of the body should be covered and be wrapped in a hide with. No part by inherent exceptional and should be. Interpreted as a distraction. Lengs are allowed, but a ruined monkey must be occurred, the student's skin definitely must be covered by a skirt or long skirt. All of the same, I sort of were the previous dress code for attendance area that we need to have. And then this is our new. Our new like dress code problem.
All students who attend any public school in the Fall Mountain School District are expected to dress appropriately for a K through twelve educational environment. Any clothing that interferes with student safety or disrupts the educational environment is prohibited and may result in disciplinary consequences. Dress codes in Fall Mountain School shall permit any student to wear any religiously and ethnically specific or significant head covering or hairstyle. Maintain gender equality by subjecting any students to the same set of rules regardless of shape, size, or gender. Not have a disparate impact on students of a particular gender. Be clear, specific, and objective when in defining terms if used.
Prohibit any district employee from acquiring any students to undress in front of any individual, including, in force, same district employee. To comply with dress or group. Prohibit clothing that depicts language or images that are vulgar, discriminatory, or obscene, sexually explicit, or alluding to sexual content. That contains threats such as gay signals, that depicts illegal or violent behavior, or items prohibited in the school. Settings such as women's, drug, alcohol, tobacco products, nicotine, or vinegar products, or drug product.
Dress code issues to be addressed thoroughly and discreetly, and families should be made aware of dress code infections and may be asked to wear and change clothes. Students should not be expected to miss school due to dress code issues, although there may be. And this is the proposed dress code for local school attendance area, but we are here to propose it for the rest of the district because we feel that. Although there, the district policy is not as strict as our own policy, we want to plan this new policy to prevent any. Problems or spikes that students or staff have with the dress code happening in the future. Anyway.
Go ahead.
Have you worked with either of the other attendance areas on this? Have you gotten any input? Uh, no, we have not been able to. I think Charles Town did something.
I know Dustin shared, I think, part of this with me back in June when you were supposed to present.
Yeah, we, we shared it with the other attendance areas, just to have them take a look at it and everything like that. And we said that the next steps, you know, after the feedback that we received today. Would be to kind of see if the other attendance areas would like to kind of. Join and, and see if this is something that they would like to do as well. But if not, then this is definitely something that Walpole is looking.
So. You're gonna give feedback from the other towns, but you're gonna move forward with it in Walpole?
If, if they don't want, so art, so what the students really wanted to was we, we had the old dress code. That was there for years in place and they really wanted that to change, which over the summer we put the, the district's dress code in, which. We kind of felt was just very broad, doesn't really have specific examples of what they're looking for, and it leaves it up to administration to be like. This isn't appropriate, this is appropriate, which makes it very challenging. So if the district did not want to move. Forward with it, this is something that we would like to do for Walpole. If like Charles Town or Alstead and High School did not feel like this was necessary. Because as of right now, each school kind of has their own specific dress code piece with the overarching of the, the district's dress code policy.
Yeah, I mean, I think right now each school has its own whatever.
Yeah.
And it's not really a district, is it?
No.
If I go to Charles Town, that's one school. If I go to Walpole, it doesn't feel like I'm part of Fall Mountain. Because it's just a completely different school with different colors.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering. If it's, if it doesn't go district wide, is it Walpole who decides that they're going to implement this? Well.
Go ahead.
I mean, my sense would be that the school board approves handbooks. And typically things like dress code and such are in handbooks, so it doesn't negate the role of the school board. In making that decision. However, having said that. I think any decision that the schools in the district could all come to an agreement on. I think is a win for the kids because they don't go from school to school wondering like, oh, this was okay here and now it's not here. And so I know some of those conversations have been had sort of in passing. But I also know they had wanted to get the kids sort of geared up and back into things to present to the board to see if the board. Had questions, but also if the board were like, this sounds really weird. No, you know, we're a little hesitant to that.
And any suggestions moving, like moving forward and stuff like that?
I like it. I think you guys did a great job. Bringing it up to twenty twenty two is, is definitely a plus. So don't take any of my comments as that. I'm just wondering, as a district, how do we operate as a district? How does each school decide amongst itself?
And I think their main thing was when we were meeting is they want it to be district wide and. It was harder last year of getting everyone together. How do you do that? But if. Taking the feedback from tonight, suggestions and everything, then maybe we can reach out to the other attendance areas to come together and see. What are your thoughts? What are the changes? What are there other pieces that you would like to add or take away?
So nice work. It's great when students get involved and bring forward new ideas. A couple of thoughts, just because I sit on the policy committee, okay? We can absolutely look at the student dress code policy J I C A and see if it needs updating. I think as far as mascots and all of that, tho- those are going to be individual in the lower grades and there's a specific reason for that. So I don't think that would come be brought into this portion of, you know, policy or handbook information.
Right.
And I think there's got to be a little bit of autonomy at the different age levels because what might be appropriate, you know, at a high school level. May not necessarily be appropriate at a primary level. So I think that in the past. That may be why it's been a little bit more broad where they get to make some of the decisions locally. It's just because, you know, there sometimes is a little bit of give and play on, on age ranges.
You, you mean like the overall district policy?
Yeah.
Is, is broad.
Is a little bit broader.
Given to the, that the individual schools can make the, make the decision.
Some of the decision, yeah.
Into there, that kind of goes, that's, the idea is that it would go into their handbooks.
Absolutely.
And then we approve their handbooks.
Right, right, to hit Brendan's point. But I think that the reason behind the original dress code being a little bit more broad was due to differences in age groups and. And ideas like that. But I think that. You know, if they could standardize some of the language in the handbooks across the similar age groups that makes sense. That that would absolutely be great because, you know, to your point, if a child moves town, a different town, or when they come together at the high school. You know, they can be coming from similar background situations. And yes, Walpole's was a little bit more restrictive than that.
Just a note, I used to wear cutoff shorts, okay, as a kid. It was not female only at the time, it's science. No, they weren't, no, but they were fringe.
I have a question. And I applaud you guys for coming to the board, for putting in all the hard work. It's not easy for seventh and eighth graders to do that in this setting, and we really appreciate it. Any thought in the process of going to school uniforms? Where everybody's similar and nobody has to worry about keeping up with the newest styles or. You know, having to have the right kicks or whatever, you know?
Um, we did consider that, think about that, yeah, did some research. We cited some articles by the New York Times and Vox. Did like student reports of different schools across the country about how they felt about the. District dress codes and a lot of the students had school uniforms and they felt that they were. Not like, they felt that they were restricting and restricted as some of their books, some of their expressions. And that form of like comparison, you know, in other ways that were also negative, so.
Did your research? That's a lot last year. I was very, very, very proud of this group.
Nice job. Very nice job. So. Thank you for, thank you for your hard work and.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
And you did a very nice job with your presentation too.
Thank you.
Nice job, you guys.
I was a four H, I was a four H evaluator on presentation, so, nice job. Yeah, we could add it to our list of policies and then hopefully if maybe the, the principals could have a discussion about it.
Had some informal discussion, so.
Maybe they could send to us what some of the pieces are that they might think would be helpful in an actual district policy.
So they're all leaving, but I would love to have them come back and tell us what happened in the good part to the other schools, you see the other schools of the boards. I mean, I think they're just getting started, come back and see what's going on.
They did a really good job and I love it, you know, the thing that researched the, the, the school uniforms.
I don't agree with their research, but.
No.
Doesn't matter.
I, and to Andy's point, I think if you did, if you did really wide research, there's prosing, they're, they bring up prosing, cons on both. It would kill our budget to have fifteen different uniforms. You'd have to have one for N C C S. All different colors.
All different.
See where I'm going with this?
Yeah.
As I'm wearing my blue ball. All right, so the. Next. The next business is Articles of Agreement that was tabled from ten, ten, twenty two. Articles three and eighteen of the Belmont Regional School District for the March two thousand twenty three warrant to read. Number three, as amended on March sixth nineteen seventy six. The Belmont Regional School District shall be responsible for grades three K through twelve. Elementary schools will be maintained in Acworth, Alstead. Crossing out North Charles Town, Charles Town, Langdon, crossing out North Walpole and Walpole. That before future action in transferring another grade from one town to another be taken. Meetings be held by the school board in the town concerned with transfer. And then eighteen was as amended on March thirteenth two thousand seven. The district agrees that a future warrant article proposing any of the following. Acquisition of land, construction of a new school, square footage additions to existing schools. Major renovations or repairs as determined by the school board appropriations to or withdrawals from any elementary capital reserve fund established in two thousand six. Closure of North Walpole, North Walpole or North Charles Town School, stepping added because it's in bold, that's been added. Then crossed out the cost of such expenditures to be apportioned exclusively to one town per existing district. Pre, one town pre-existing district. I agree. Shall be passed or defeated on the basis of votes telling only in the identified town pre-existing district. Crossed out with the cost of any such and added in. Any appropriation for expenditures above to be apportioned exclusively to any such town or pre-existing district. Sir? Yes, I make a motion for this to go on the warrant this year.
Do I hear it second?
Second. All right, so we can now discuss it, but.
Well, actually, we already made that motion. We tabled it, so we should actually make a motion to take it from the table.
Okay, so. Make a motion, take it from the table.
There you go.
And put it back on.
Not put it back on the table, but yeah.
So second it, second to pull the original.
Okay. Okay, so now we can discuss.
All those in favor of pulling it.
Oh, we're going to vote to take it off the table. All in favor of taking it off the table. Any opposed, taking it off the table. Okay, now we can discuss, thank you. Yes.
Okay, so I assume that under discussion, we can talk about whether we actually like this wording. Or whether we want to make a change to it. So my concern with this is that it's short sighted. That if indeed Acworth. Alstead, Langdon also wanted to combine and close their small schools. Not saying it will happen, not saying we're going anywhere near that, but if they might want to, we would have to go through this whole process again. So would it be us to take out the names of all of the towns? And just say the Belmont Regional School District is responsible for three K through twelve.
Where, what would, sorry, then you would be looking at elementary schools will be maintained. What? In the district.
Well, doesn't, that before future action in transferring another grade from one town, whether be taken meetings be held by the school board in the town concerned with the transfer?
I think that, right, but I think that was added because we did have the discussion of what if Vilas. Langdon, so I think that last sentence was added. By the attorney.
There wasn't anything that's in bold is the only thing that's out of it.
Because we had this discussion.
My only concern with changing this is that we don't have legal counsel here to give feedback on how it affects the rest of the. The Articles of Agreement.
Well, you have four more meetings, you could table, you could not make any motions and ask for advice on that.
Yeah.
And bring it back.
Yes, Andy.
I, I think that as a cooperative school district that it's inherent on us to maintain schools in each of the towns. I can see. Subtracting North Walpole and North Charles Town because really it's Charles Town and Walpole. And it gives those towns the ability to keep schools in their town, but geography, you know, they, they could close one if they wanted to. I don't know.
Yeah, because.
That, that's what I think.
Technically, they have more than one school in their town.
Yeah, absolutely.
Where Acworth has one school in its town, Langdon has one school in its town. Well. Elementary school, it's, it's saying.
Right.
Elementary schools shall be maintained in Acworth. This is not an elementary.
This is a cooperative high school, so this is not a, it's not a town specific.
They have, they only have one school.
No.
Elementary.
Right, but, but in the article, I mean, in here, it says elementary schools will be maintained in each of the towns.
So for conversation's sake, if Sarah Porter was to have a massive fire. And the town Langdon came together and said, we don't want to pay five million dollars to put up a two room schoolhouse. We would have to go, we would have to build, or Langdon would have to build a school to replace that.
Not necessarily.
If they would unless we change this.
Not necessarily. Charles Town primary kids were shuttled to North Walpole for many years. Because of issues with the school, so there are always workarounds.
Right, but they were maintaining other elementaries.
Well, that would be a spot.
Building in Langdon, they would have to build one. And that is hogtying them. This is hogtying them. That, taking those names out doesn't prevent them from keeping one. But it does ensure that they do have to do something if there's an emergency or something else happens.
I, I just think if you eliminate the towns, then you basically are dissolving the cooperative.
Well, they're still part, but they're still part of the cooperative technically, but it would, it allows them if they.
Everything.
It would, but it still would allow them if they wanted to close a school and pay tuition, inter-district tuition to one of the other schools.
Which they do to Vilas already. Which they do to Vilas already.
For, for the upper grades, yes.
But wouldn't that be a different conversation?
I think that would be a conversation to your point where it allows for them to have discussions about bringing it forward. What's up, Kevin? You have a thought?
I was thinking, actually, we probably need them, it'd be nice if we had a motion to amend the motion, so then we could actually see if there is, um. If the, if the committee, if the board wants to move forward with that. We will, we have a motion on the table.
We don't have any motions on and we're discussing it anyway.
I know we are, and we shouldn't be.
Right.
We should make. Then we can, uh, second that and then you can either vote on that at the end or not.
All right, I make a motion to amend Article three to read. As amended on March sixth nineteen seventy-six dash the appendix original language. The Belmont Regional School District shall be responsible for grades three K through twelve. Before future action in transferring another grade from one town to another to be taken, meetings to be held by the school board in the town concerned with the transfer.
You're taking out the whole sentence, elementary schools will be maintained.
So I'll second that, so we can have discussion.
All right.
Yes, so simply it would remove the names.
So do we need to?
We're just, we're having some discussion on the amendments.
So not, somebody needs to second it. I'm rusty, what do you want?
So we're taking out elementary schools, we're all apart about elementary schools in the towns. And we're starting again with before future action in transferring another grade from one town to another be taken. Meetings will be held by the school board in the town concerned.
Absolutely, we do not believe that this should be done without legal advice.
Yeah, this is.
Absolutely, you do not think that, that anything on this should be amended without legal advice.
So what would legal advice do? Because we can put forth any type of amendment to the voters at the district meeting.
I'm just saying that we, we worked with legal for what, well over an hour on this wording specifically that night. We had it, yeah, so.
What are we watching?
I mean, you.
Saying is, all I'm saying is, I do not feel that we should amend. Or amend this wording without legal.
Okay, let's take a vote.
So hold on, Brendan, mind just.
Oh, the only thing I was gonna say is that you never know, speaking to Shelley's point, you never know. I think without a thorough look, if there were other parts of your Articles Agreement that this would touch upon. And so what you could do if there was something you wanted to go forward is you could ask us to ask legal about it. Or see if there was some other suitable language, but yeah, I think anything. I think you probably wouldn't want to find out after you took the vote that there was a problem in Article two.
Right.
Or whatever.
Yes.
Move the question, please.
Okay. Um, all in favor of what?
You're gonna vote to move the question?
Yeah, I, you, if you make a motion to, to close debate by making the motion and move the question, you still need a majority to say, yes, we want to close debate.
Okay.
Okay, even though you have a motion on the table.
This is, this is, it's a subsidiary motion that takes presence.
Okay.
I don't know, I guess we need a class.
So do we want, how do I word, word it? I don't know how to word it. So it's a.
Just all in favor of?
All in favor of closing ba, the closing debate of moving the motion.
On the amendment.
On the, on the amendment. All in favor of closing discussion.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so debate is closed. All in favor of. The amendment as read by. All opposed? Okay, now. So that didn't go. All right, so, and.
So.
I still think.
So we now we need a motion, now we need a motion for what we're doing with this.
Correct, I make a motion that we put. Number three and number eighteen amendments on the warrant.
Second. As written.
As written.
Okay.
Previously.
Second again.
Originally.
Okay. Do we have a first, first and a second? Do we have a motion and a second? Okay. So now any debate, any discussion, debate, any discussion on that, on, on these as they're written right now.
Go ahead, Kevin, go.
Recognize you, so go ahead.
That's all right, yours might be more pertinent.
No, I, I just have, when we put this warrant article on the ballot, do we actually, we got a spot to talk about it a little bit? Because it stands out to me that looks like if I read this right now, what stands out in bold is closure of the North Wall Pole and North Charlestown Schools. And that sounds like we're putting a motion to close them, right? So I just make sure that somewhere.
So when we do a hearing, when you have your budget and warrant article hearing, you discuss all of what it means, right? And then we also normally in past years, I don't know about last year. Yeah, in the budget digest, it will have a description explaining what it's about.
Yeah, I mean, there were still a lot of people that will get confused.
Yep, probably.
We have in previous years with something that's significant that requires a little more, we have sent home. Like in everyday direct mail, like a, like a, a more broad explanation of hot topic articles. So that's always an option too.
I mean, you do have eighteen where it says that there has to be a future warrant article proposing.
It is more for your purposes too, so you know exactly what was changing.
Right.
So. I don't know if we have to leave it in bold or we should leave it in bold, but I think it's good for people to be able to know what, what exactly we're changing.
Jamie, what, what?
I was just gonna thank Alyssa for her thought process on it and I appreciate that you bring it up. Um, but I do, I do to their point, think eighteen would maybe still allow for that to occur. But we'll see.
Yeah. All right. More discussion?
No.
No, okay, I'm gonna close the discussion then and all in favor of putting these on the, on the warrant as written. Any opposed? All right, done.
The question?
Yes.
Or comment? Related to the Articles Agreement, but not this, is, is it possible to write into the Articles Agreement? Establishing Alstead, Acworth and Langdon as its own attendance area? For school consolidation or, I don't know, other things. Because.
Which towns?
Alstead, Langdon and Acworth are unique as, you know, they're tied together.
Langdon and Acworth aren't attendance area.
Correct, in words, in what we talk about. But as far as like Alyssa was saying, you know, what if something happened to a school in that attendance area?
And call, and say in attendance areas.
Make it an official three-town attendance area that, I don't know. Could intermingle students, could cha, send them to different schools as required without financial repercussions, I don't.
I think that's a whole nother set.
Differs in each town.
That's, yeah, that's a. We used to, we used to send kids back and forth all the time, but that's a whole other, that, that's not, it's, I, I'm gonna say that that's not on the. It's not on the, um, agenda right now, and so we'd have to discuss whether we're gonna add it to the agenda.
I think you. Well, I think you could probably bring that to the Articles of Agreement Committee as a part of the discussion. We don't have, okay, well, as a strategic plan, it could maybe be folded into a part of that. We discussed that many years ago. There's big pros and cons.
Well, if there's no interest on board, I don't want to.
Because we have more articles within the discussion. Um, so in new business, we have Articles of Agreement suggested changes to apportionment. Which I believe is, so. I believe that, that Alyssa, that was something, that was what you were bringing up, so.
Yes.
Um, do, um, do you want to? Make a motion for that and then have some. So it's a discussion, so discuss it.
So in your folders, I know about added, um, was a short kind of idea that I've been tossing around with. With some other people in the district about a way to make our Articles of Agreement much simpler. Um, with the withdrawal that happened, it was talked about at the school board level that something would get done to make this a little bit simpler, a little easier to understand. Give any taxpayer stakeholder the ability to look at our budget and figure out. What's being charged, how it's being put out there. Um, and so our thought process was to take the six methods that we have, which are the common costs in this district. Which are all the things such as our superintendent, all of our SAU staff, and all of the reasons we became a district in the first place. So that we could share these costs that were overwhelming for any one of our five small towns to come together and share. And split those between three attendance areas. Charlestown needs a superintendent, Walpole needs a superintendent, Alstead needs a superintendent, so do Acworth and Langdon. To take those and split them equally because of our shared need, a common reason for being a district makes sense to me. It would take our six, uh, thirteen, excuse me, uh, line of apportionment, the ones we see in the annual report every year. Some random percentage or fraction that then gets subdivided again and cut it down to three. I think it would then hit every attendance area, every town and every single stakeholder in this district.
And those common costs are apportioned out as ADM?
Some of them are ADM, some are a percentage of insurance costs.
Except that you, in the Alstead attendance area, you have three towns.
That's right.
So how would you do the cost of that? I mean, Acworth does not pay the same taxes as Alstead.
Nope, well, Charlestown doesn't seem, pay the same tax as anybody.
I know, but Charlestown is its own attendance area. Acworth is not its own attendance area. Acworth is part of the Alstead attendance area, so if you said that it was, you broke it up into three. Charlestown, Charlestown is one third, but Acworth is not, I mean.
Right, well, that was kind of my idea and it's been talked around.
Yeah.
To be a third of a third because they share so many costs, they do have tuition agreements.
But we're not a third of a third, it's, it's, it's very different.
It is very different.
Langdon is different, is. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Interesting concept. I think part of it goes back to what Andy said about an expanded discussion of whether or not. Acworth and Langdon wanted to join into Alstead and be one attendance area. That's another discussion for those three towns to make.
Yeah.
Or not, um. I agree with you on some points that, where there are direct expenditures that don't change. Due to level of usage, okay, so I think, and, and I know the six methods intimately. Um, I think that three of the methods probably lend themselves to that, but I don't feel that the three. That are overseeing transportation, um, the liability costs for the buildings. Because of the square footage and what it takes to run them individually and the technology one. I don't think, I, I don't think it makes sense for those three because they have very distinct needs. And they're different, much different in size, so, but I think with the other three. Which is the SAU, the special education and the third one, I. Uh, the shared services, right, shared middle school services. I think with those three, it might make sense to take a look at that. Um, but not with the transportation, the buildings and the, and the other one.
If. For transportation, for example, we all share a transportation director, we all need one person and his staff. So that is a shared cost, we equally have access to that person.
Yeah, but when Acworth only has ninety kids to move and Charlestown has six hundred or whatever it is. You know, that's not a, that's not, that's, there's no way you can make an argument for total equality on that.
Except that there's a common need, which is why we came to be.
There's a common need for one school bus for them, not five.
Two years ago.
I think that what we would want to do with this is to have, again, I think it would be important to have a lawyer take a look at, at it, you know.
I, I think it would behoove us to have a committee take a look at it. Lawyers don't even understand what we do here. Okay, so for the most part, I, I think that, you know, it's a, and, and I speak not as somebody from Walpole sitting here. I speak as the at-large person voted in by the five towns sitting here. That, you know, some of the methods, when you completely understand them, it makes sense for. As it does to maybe look at changing the high school formula for direct expenses that don't change. You gotta pay for lights regardless of there's one kid here or five hundred kids, you know, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that's what we did when, when I used to run the base program, why we had four, at, um, Belmont paid for four seats. It didn't matter whether that, that seat was full or not, and the reason for that was because if the kid, they, it started falling apart. In their, in their school, they could come back.
Right.
And so, yeah.
I'd like to see some volunteers come forward and. Play this out a little bit.
Do some, run some numbers. Yeah, run some, not, get, take some actual expenditure or budgetary numbers and run the numbers to look at it. Because, I mean, I, we'll have, it will have financial consequences, and so with having actual data to use. Then you can decide whether it's feasible, right? And or whether it's gonna fly up the flagpole.
Yeah, so do I have?
Yeah, I'd like to be involved in that too. I think there's other models we should be looking at, not just this model. And I think also, probably have a system right now is, uh, we just established that attendance area is not defined in the Articles of Agreement. We'd have to go back and do that and we also, our Articles of Agreement don't stipulate how, I don't know how we even do it now. With Gail's salary, how we separate her salary count into Acworth, Langdon and Alstead.
It's in the tuition inter-district.
Notice a line item on the Langdon budget for this principal's salary. Right, so somehow that number is being stipulated out, it's not in the Articles of Agreement, how that, how that comes is. The, her was in the last budget, but yes.
I think it's eighty, ten and ten in each, eighty percent.
That's not stipulated anywhere in the, in the Articles of Agreement, so we would need somewhere.
That's not just me either, there's specialists that.
I understand, um, we would need that part put in the Articles of Agreement too before I would be comfortable with doing something like this. But I would love to be on a committee that, you know, that kind of gained all the different options. Uh, and kind of looked at, um, x-rays as well as, I think once Mary's done with budgets, we can't make her do anything until after that point. I'd, I'd love to be on that.
So, yeah, I'll expand on that. One, I love this discussion and it should happen two years ago, but whatever, I'll let it go. Uh, I won't, but whatever, um, but I would, I would hope that. With the budget committee and budget season upon us, that we would not be hounding the business administrator right now. Or the SAU office on getting this committee in-depth information. So I would hope that we would, we would be wise to wait until maybe after March. Summertime might be a great time for this.
Yeah. It could be a great.
Maybe not with Mary, but with ourselves. But.
Thank you, Shelley.
I mean, you're invited if you are.
Oh, I'll come.
It would be, it would be a great, um, I, I think that would be a, a good time for it, yeah.
Also, I think we only have one chance with this to put the four voters, so we're gonna make sure that we are. Also, I think we only have one chance with this to put the four voters, so we're gonna make sure that we are. Taking it to the community, so I've gotten feedback, we've only just voted on it here. Make sure we can get it through something we really believe in actually gets approved by two thirds of the vote, so.
I just really hope that after March, Alyssa. Continues to hound this board. On making sure that they follow through on what they said this evening, that they are going. So that they are going to be looking at it.
So I know you're saying that with a smile, but I take a little offense to that because I wasn't sitting here the last time it was all discussed. And so I think it is good conversation and it's it's in, it's all of us that have to be invested. In trying to address this moving forward. Um and it has been taken to the voters at different times in the last twenty-six years. Um some of us know the history here, some of us have lived it, you know, some of our, you've lived it, I don't know how many times, so. So I'm hopeful too, because I I want for feelings of, you know, inequity to stop. You know? And I want it to be thoughtful, so that it's meaningful and it's right. It's never gonna be perfect, because nothing ever is, it's called give and take. And we have to come to a middle ground where, you know. Where everybody feels like they've given what they need to and that everybody's getting back what they need to as well. You know, it's like a marriage, right, it 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 changes over time and things change over time and we just have to. Continue moving forward with it, you're right, Shelley, but but not, you know, not with negative comments.
It wasn't meant as a negative.
Okay, thank you.
And.
We just need to follow through on the things that we say in our meetings, that's all.
Yeah.
And yes, you're right, there are different members sitting on this board right now.
That's right.
But there have been promises made in the past that unfortunately. Have not. Been followed up on and that does create that tension, right, that. That feeling of angst, I guess.
And all the work we do. At the end of the day. If the majority of the voters who show up don't vote it through, that's all we can do, right?
Absolutely.
So um. I'd like to move forward, um so that this is, we're we're talking about this, it's for discussion. It sounds like, I what I'm hearing us, what what I'm hearing us saying is that we would like to discuss this further and keep it, keep it. In in the limelight, um it's not something that we um. Have the energy or the. Enough energy to be able, resources, there we go, to be able to, to time, resources, energy, whatever. To be able to address right this minute because we've got a lot of budget work to do, um so um we will be doing it um. Will definitely be putting it on the list of things to be working on, workshop, yeah, schedule, okay. So. Is that okay with you?
Well, I. I think right after, uh my ideal would be to do it right after March, right after the oath.
Right.
Um simply because. You put it in summer and then all of a sudden it's budget season.
Absolutely, absolutely, right.
That is what keeps happening for this kind of thing and I don't wanna see that happen right then.
No, I think I I totally.
How about our April workshop?
Yeah.
Good, I have a lot more information to bring then, cause I did already work it out.
So I just wanna go on record because I'm not gonna be here after March. I do believe that the apportionment formula that Fall Mountain has is the best apportionment formula in the state, I think it's the most fair to every town. I do think it needs tweaking, I think the one of the big problems that has presented itself is how you give money back to the towns. It's apportioned a certain way, yet it doesn't go back that same way, so that's a problem. And it could be big for one town, I don't know. But that, I think that's the big thing you work on, and I think that you just go through the methods and look and see if. The items in the methods are in still in the appropriate places now that it's been there for a while. You 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 know, it it might be complicated, but it's fair, and just because nobody wants to look at it or thinks it's hard. It, you know, anything you change, right, somebody wins and somebody loses. That's just how, what's gonna happen.
Yep.
So if Charleston wins, Actworth, Alstead loses, I don't know.
Only if you're thinking about it in terms of of dollars.
Okay, somebody's gonna pay more, somebody's gonna pay less.
Good, because my ultimate goal in this really is to give the community some peace from all of this. I think everybody here has had it and I don't think anybody can disagree about that.
Alright, so.
So, thank you.
We will all keep our, keep um in our backs of our mindset after we vote, we um. I know Shelley will keep me. You will keep, no, I know you will too.
How about I make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
We're not there yet, we got a grant report. Wanna make it?
Yes, I make a motion to accept the grant of five thousand dollars from the Clement Savings Bank. For the Food for Kids Backpack Program, Charleston.
Sorry, here a second, okay, there's a second. All in favor, I need a discussion. All in favor. Any opposed? Alright, and. Alright, you got. Okay, and then how about the consent agenda?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Alright. Alright, okay, you guys ready? And any discussion on the consent, oh, we don't really do a discussion on the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah, what? There might not be any discussion, but is there anybody here that's gonna talk about the French club trip? I'd like to hear about that.
Yes, Phil.
Who is French only?
No, I don't know what they're saying.
Alright, so last fall, Caleb and I, who at the time were the only students in the French National Honor Society, or our chapter of the French National Honor Society. We presented at the teachers conference, the New Hampshire World Language. Thank you, I'm a senior here, I'm in the French Honor Society.
I'm Caleb Lawrence, I'm also in the French Honor Society and a senior.
And I'm Rebecca Ford, better known as Madam. Now you can say your feet soft.
So anyway, we presented to a bunch of teachers, we did really great, and they decided we were best of conference, so. We would like to present at another conference coming up in March in New York City for world language teachers or French.
World language teachers.
World language teachers.
So they won best of New Hampshire, so basically all of the presentations that happened last fall at the New Hampshire World Language Teachers Conference. There were over fifty of them, they were selected as the best presentation. And are nominated and are hopefully going to go to NECA, which is the Northeast Foreign Language Teacher Conference. Um so it runs all the way from Lake Virginia up through the state, so it's not just New England, um. And it's in New York City, beginning of March, um so it's for the presenters to go. So that all three of us are signed up as presenters because at the time they were minors. Uh they'll still be minors actually then, just barely. And um so hopefully we would be able to go. I would like to also bring the rest of the French Honor Society and hopefully the future inductees from this year, so students. Uh were just invited to apply through the qualifications, the most uh difficult qualification being you have to have. A ninety percent average in all of your French classes, and I'm not known for giving out a lot of A's. Uh so we have very select few students, so it'd be up to um ten students and myself going on the trip is what we would like to do. With these students in the French. Go right ahead.
So how many, how many other students are there beyond the ten?
So right.
In French.
In French in total in my high school. Um I'd have to check the numbers, are you talking about that have ever taken it or currently enrolled?
Currently enrolled in French probably.
So, yeah, all of this year of the semester.
Pick one.
Um this semester, I am teaching French two with eighteen students and French four with seven students. And I have also a Spanish class, and then next semester I have French one with approximately twenty students. Uh French five with seven students, which is an A P course, and French three with seventeen or eighteen kids.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's a long march.
It's grown significantly over the years and I actually am working on documenting it because I'm planning to apply to have the French program recognized nationally. As an exemplary French program in the country, so we're on the move for big things here. Which is why it happened in all the summers.
That's, that's very good, because it, we used to have a great French program and it's kind of petered out and it's good that it's coming back.
Yes, so I was hired because you guys needed a French teacher here at Mountain, so I moved here for the job to teach French specifically. This is my fourth year and we're doing big things.
What are the, are they all seniors, the ten or?
No, um the some of, it's sophomores and up because I'm not teaching French one, you have to be in your second half of French two. To be invited to the Honor Society for the national standards. So it'd be sophomores through seniors.
Thank you. Have a good time.
On that note, I might come back to you a little later after they've done some fundraising and stuff and see if the board might be amenable to either.
Another chaperone?
Chaperone, yes, yeah, no, to maybe contribute a little bit as a district. For their recognition, but we'll see kind of what they need first, I, someone told me New York's pricey, I have no idea.
So the numbers are on the last page, it is expensive, um as winning. The nomination for Nolton is going to contribute a thousand dollars towards our expenses, normally if it. It's one teacher that usually presents and wins that nomination, so the thousand dollars would cover their hotel room and expenses. Um being a variety of genders and um a teacher, we require at least three hotel rooms, it's our biggest expense and factor. And some of you might remember, we went to New Orleans, um despite how fun that was to not say where the conference was and to bike around the city of New Orleans. For all week straight in the summertime, um we would love to say where the con. It hot is really an understatement.
My godfather lives there, you know.
We were adorable running through the airport with our bike helmets. So we would really love to stay at the hotel where the conferences this time, because. Transportation was an adventure at all points at our last voyage and added a significant amount of time, so this would be much. Easier if we could take the train down and then stay at the hotel where the conference is, it also makes it a lot easier to meet people. Um so a big factor is that they both wanna be teachers, a lot of the students in French Honor Society wanna be teachers, many specifically language teachers. So this way they kind of know what to do, they get to meet professors at the university level, uh they've been invited to many colleges.
I've actually been given a couple job offers before I mentioned that I'm actually still in high school.
So it's enough for them to meet important people and at this point, we've met many of them. We hope to meet a few more.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
So we haven't voted on the consent agenda, so. So, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Alright.
Any opposed? Alright. Go forth and prosper. Alright. So. Policies and everything, right, we're down to committee reports, okay. Do you have any committee reports?
So I missed the committee, I missed the budget committee meeting, um I would like to take this opportunity to thank everybody for the condolences on my mother's passing. Appreciate it, it was very kind. Um but I, if there's an update, maybe um the co-chair or of the or the vice chair of the. Budget Committee or Finance Committee might wanna speak, do you want, you wanna give them an update, is that okay?
No, the only update I would have is that we've been very active meeting about all the different budget headquarters. Um individually and we're having a meeting this Wednesday, we're, as many of us as have been able to meet. With Brian and Mary and others will report back to the budget committee, so we're not quite finished yet, but. We're getting there, I think, uh we're slated for a joint meeting.
Thanks, Jennifer. Policy Committee met. And we, and we have five, five more that we met on that were, were having information, brought more information brought back to us. Cause there, I think there was five, they were kind of dovetailed together, right, like a rabbit hole where you. Look at one and one more attaches to it, yeah, so, um so we're busy on policy committee as well. I don't know what other committees.
Anyone wanna hear about the superintendent search?
Oh, oh yeah, superintendent search, yeah, yeah, we'll see, that's right. Alyssa and I have been agreeing with each other, awesome.
Actually, it's been exciting, the Brian group that we contracted with is pretty intense, they have a whole. Process and it's a lot of information from all the ones, but we have some really good discussions. And I think we are developing a really good job description um for what we want as a district. There will be a community survey going out um.
We're hoping to have it go out like uh right around Thanksgiving, yeah.
We're gonna finalize it at our next meeting, can't remember off the top of my head, it's very soon, and so hopefully it's gonna go out all tomorrow. Seven o'clock, right.
No, Jim.
I did that this morning, like the meeting I'd forgotten, I had to be in hand over at eleven, that was bad.
Um so about the survey, we do hope that you all send it out to all your schools and and we're aiming to make it very simple, you know. Click the the choices and give your opinions and, you know, think people are actually right if they want to, but to really um. Just get the maximum number of participants, so. That's what I'm saying now, hopefully we will have something ready to go out in December to the whole wide range of. locations for people to see that application.
Yeah, and I have to say, she does a wonderful job of of, it's a very big group and she does a wonderful job of keeping us all on task and moving forward and um. And getting, getting input from everybody and um just, I feel like I'm continuously just so glad that we have them to be. To be moving us forward with it, so. Think it was a good decision.
Along those lines, I did ask our Christina why um Fall Mountain wasn't listed because now that. Now every time I get mail from the New Hampshire School Board Association, it tells me about Innsdale's looking for a superintendent and other towns. He is looking for a superintendent, so I did ask him, why, why isn't Fall Mountain listed since we went through you?
We're still making our Mary Poppins list.
He said, when we have that job description down and final and everything, Fall Mountain will be listed, and I said, okay. And now I know that we're not there yet.
Yeah, I call it making the Mary Poppins list, you know, you make the the list of everything you want and then you put it in the fire and it burns up and goes up the chimney and Mary Poppins comes down. Right now, you're in Mary Poppins.
Yeah, I think you should.
Okay.
To keep it very generic.
Yeah, I've been told to stop singing, cause you're under.
I will keep it very generic, we are in negotiation with the teachers in case you didn't know. And um we are, we are moving forward, we had a good meeting, um it looks like we're getting close. To where we wanna be with money, um which is always the big stumbling part. Um and and so we should have, um hopefully by the next official school board um meeting. We should have some, some figures for you about where we're, where we're sitting at, I don't wanna give anything away now. But we are um, we are making good progress and I think uh. Um um Matt Upton, I believe his name is, our our attorney is doing a, doing a great job working with their attorney and. I think we're making, making progress, I could be wrong, I don't think there are any teachers there. At least nobody started throwing anything at me or anything like that. So I think we're good in some way. Um, and hopefully, uh, the next meeting, you'll have some details for you.
Great. All right. Okay, um. We have treasures report just going around that everybody's, that's moving around, right?
Yeah, it's over here.
All right. Um, do I have a motion to accept the treasure report?
Yes.
Okay.
Second, okay. All in favor of accepting the treasure report? Anyone opposed? Okay.
Does this non-public game mean I can't do the motion during your?
That's what you mean, Shelley. Not yet.
I moved to go into the one question first, sorry. Um, do you wanna make no, notice in the official minutes that we're signing the documents?
Sure.
Yeah, you wanna make notice in the official minutes that we're signing MS twenty-five and DEE twenty-five. You need, yeah, no problem. You need to note that for audit.
Yeah.
All right, so we are going to move into non-public, um, for, uh, the purpose of uh, the purposes of the dismissal, promotion, compensation or discipline of an employee or investigation of charges against or per and matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of an person other than a member, than a member of the board.
Second.
People miss them on, so. Do we have a motion? Okay, roll call vote, Jamie?
Yes.
Yes. Going in the. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.